...painting by Noni Elabisi about Dr. Still's opera, Trouble Island. And the libretto was written by Langston Hughes and Verna Arvey. It's looking at the history of Haiti, about kidnapped people who were forced into slavery, and then the drums being the intervention. Culture, music, being the intervention.
Unheard of inspiration for European-based classical music of the 1930s. Curators turned to L.A.'s Central Library for archives.
And I have to say, Alan Westby in the music department was a wonderful resource for us. He helped us get all of the sheet music, and I scanned the conductor's sheet music. So you see that in the room.
And it's Still's music that you can learn to perform on piano, drums, and keyboards as part of the center's annual African-American composer series.
Knowledge of the composer as well as learning to play an instrument. And it's mostly for beginners, but it's pretty great what they get out of it.
Great and filling up fast. Join us for classical music lessons at the William Grant Still Arts Center at 2520 Southwest View Street in L.A.'s wonderful West Adams District. The exhibit and lessons are free.
The lessons take place through May 11th. May 11th is also Dr. William Grant Still's birthday. So how do you connect with your constituents? One way is to have lunch with them, and that's exactly what Councilmember Paul Krokorian did. He hosted Lunch with Paul in Valley Glen, giving folks an opportunity to meet neighbors and learn about happenings around their community. And residents ate it up.
Well, today we're having another one of my events that we call Lunch with Paul. And it's a great opportunity to be able to support a local small business. And we invite our constituents to come out, chat with me, meet each other.
Well, the reason I come to these is, one, I'm very supportive of what he's been doing in our community, and it's also just the easiest way to get to him if I have a question. You can just walk up to him, tell him what you're concerned about, but he needs to hear your voice.
It's been a great treat for me to be able to have these with my constituents, and I think most folks enjoy this opportunity as well.
When it comes to scams, seniors are an easy target. But there are things you can do and be aware of to make sure you or your loved ones don't fall victim. Councilmember David Ruh and other city agencies held a workshop on how seniors can stay vigilant.
Recent consumer reports stated that seniors and their families are scammed out of $3 billion a year.
Oh, wait a minute, Harriet Victoria. It says you have to send $600 to claim your prize. I think you better read the fine print.
Oh, no!
We started nine years ago to inform seniors and educate them on a peer-to-peer basis about senior fraud. The most common fraud is the grandparent scam, where they said that a grandchild or a spouse has been a victim of an accident, or they could be in prison, and they're asking for the seniors for money. The IRS scam, the romance scam, anything on the internet.
That guy's young enough to be your...
I know, but if he likes older women, isn't he cute?
Yeah, if you like babysitting.
There's all sorts of elaborate scams, and scams are constantly evolving. We know that seniors 65 and older are the number-one victims of fraud.
And we're going to stop this number-one form of elder abuse.
The Benvenidos Family Resource Center has a rich history of providing advocacy and support to the children and families of its surrounding community. L.A. This Week dropped by to check out their latest East L.A. open house.
Benvenidos has been around for almost 35 years, and it started out as a foster care agency, providing residential services for young infants and toddlers, and converted into becoming an agency providing foster care and adoption, and a whole array of community-based services, principally here in the East L.A. area.
And what I do over here is I oversee all of our programming here in our East L.A. site, which includes mental health services along with Project Safe L.A. that really works on substance abuse, HIV, and Hep C prevention.
We're celebrating how Benvenidos is now affiliated with Hillside. We had a number of offices in the East L.A. area, and we've consolidated all those offices here. So this is sort of the open house of this new service center.
All services are offered for free. They're through Medi-Cal and other types of funding, and all you need is to come in and request services, and we provide the services for you.
Our overall goal is to have an important, lasting impact on the lives of all the children, youth, and families that we serve.
Fixing the streets of L.A. isn't just men's work. These strong women from the Bureau of Street Services prove they've got what it takes to serve as role models for non-traditional careers.
One of my biggest emphasis on the city council is creating a pipeline for non-traditional careers for women to see themselves as future firefighters, police officers, and street maintenance workers. These are all really good-paying careers, and there should never be a reason why women don't see themselves in this career path.
If you, as a woman, feel that you've got what it takes to get the job done, this is a job for you. There's no signs at the door saying that you can't. You can.
Just to go out there, and just to go out there and do it. There's too many opportunities out there for females, and they're giving us that opportunity right now, so why not take advantage of it? I love what I do. We're fixing the streets, and we're learning new trades.
Enjoy some jazz at Union Station. Discover the next big food trend at FoodieCon, and Walk for Kids and for a good cause. All this and things to do. In celebration of Jazz Appreciation Month, L.A. Metro Art presents Jazz Tracks at Union Station. Spend an extraordinary evening of free live jazz showcasing the next generation of artists. Headlining the next performances will be acclaimed jazz trumpeter Christian Scott. Jazz Tracks at Union Station featuring Christian Scott brings sweet sounds to its historic ticket hall, Saturday, April 6, beginning at 4:00 p.m. Union Station is located at 800 North Alameda Street. For more info, visit Eventbrite.com. FoodieCon returns to downtown L.A. It's an edible extravaganza filled with pokey cauliflower rice and upscale toast. Discover the next big food trends. Challenge and satiate your adventurous palate. Get two whole days of sampling, shopping, and demo-watching at FoodieCon. The con happens April 6 and 7 at Downtown's L.A.'s Magic Box at the Reef, and opens at 11:00 a.m., located at 1933 South Broadway. For more, call 213-763-5806. The Los Angeles Ronald McDonald House wants you to Walk for Kids 2019. Join this yearly walk to support children and families of the L.A. Ronald McDonald House. Giving hope and help to more SoCal families is literally a walk in the park. So save the date and bring the entire family to Walk for Kids 2019, taking place Sunday, April 7, beginning at 7:00 a.m. The walk happens at Exposition Park on 700 Exposition Drive. For more info, visit WalkforKids.org/LosAngeles. Art challenges life in the latest production from the Los Angeles Poverty Department. In this show entitled "I Fly," or "How to Keep the Devil Down the Hole," the L.A. Poverty Department collaborates with residents of Skid Row to create provocative performances that confront vital issues and ask urgent questions. "I Fly," or "How to Keep the Devil in the Hole," will be running at the Red Cat from April 4 through the 6, beginning at 8:30 p.m. The Red Cat Theater is located at 631 West Second Street. For details, visit RedCat.org. Are you ready for fun with your favorite flowers? Well, Flower School L.A. Open Studios welcomes students who are interested in floral design and want to make a beautiful arrangement with the help of an experienced florist. This studio class provides the opportunity to create a seasonal garden-style design while learning a few professional techniques of floristry. The Flower School L.A. is located at 223 South Los Angeles Street and will offer its next two-day introductory series April 9 and 10. For more class schedules or to register, visit FlowerschoolLA.com. And that's a look at some things to do. If you're a health nut living or working near the Fashion District, listen up. The area's first-ever weekly farmer's market was just launched, offering a variety of farm-to-table produce and other good eats. Take a look.
Welcome to the California Market Center. We're on the plaza of the CMC for the weekly Wednesday Farmer's Market.
This is actually the first farmer's market ever in the Fashion District. This is the way that we activate our public space to engage with the neighborhood.
These markets are the mirror of their communities, and in downtown L.A., we have such a dynamic restaurant scene.
That's the idea of farm-to-table. You go to the farm, you go to the farmer, talk to him, smell the product, try the product. After, you can do your menu according to the quality and the seasonability of the product.
All you have to do is taste it, and you can tell the difference.
Because sometimes when produce goes to stores, you don't know how long it's been in a holding facility. Our stuff comes directly from the greenhouse to the farmer's market.
You're going to see a flavor profile that you're not going to be able to see at even the best grocery store chains, and we are so blessed here in Southern California to have so much.
A new exhibit highlights some of the freshest and most relevant artists working today. It's a feast for the eyes and then some.
We're inside La Luz de Jesús Gallery. Started out in Echo Park and then moved into Hollywood, and now we're here in Los Feliz. No, no. Right now is our 33rd Annual Juried Exhibition. So with this exhibition, we had 900 submissions that we get. We picked roughly 60 artists to exhibit in the two spaces that we have here in the gallery. There's a wide variety of work. There's painting, sculpture, drawing. Some of the artists are established artists within the community, we'll say, lowbrow, pop, surrealist community. And then other artists are artists that are still in school, in undergrad. There's definitely a variety of things that you'd see.
That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at Lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Shhh. If everybody could please take their seats. If everyone could please take their seats. It is Wednesday, April 3rd. We want to welcome you to City Hall. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. We do not have a quorum at this time, but if I could get everybody to please take their seats. Before we go into the celebration of the 150th anniversary of our LAPD, I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Coretts. Mr. Coretts. Mr. Coretts, the floor is yours.
It's his birthday. Oh, not important on this one. Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today is one of those once-in-a-lifetime experiences, and I have to admit, I'm absolutely giddy to introduce my colleagues to one of my lifelong heroes. Please help me welcome Dr. Jane Goodall to Los Angeles City Hall.
Give her a round of applause.
Not only are we celebrating her 85th birthday, but we're also highlighting a new campaign through the Jane Goodall Institute, the Generation Jane Campaign. More than 55 years ago, Dr. Jane Goodall first set foot on the shores of what is today Tanzania's Gombe National Park to begin her pioneering chimpanzee behavioral study. She was sent by the legendary Louis Leakey, the famous anthropologist, and she was sent with little more than binoculars and a notepad to see if a study of chimpanzees could provide a small window into the evolution of prehistoric man. You need to understand that back then, the separation of humans from animals was thought by science to be clear and distinct. The narrative was that only humans used tools, and then animals had no emotions or feelings. What Dr. Goodall uncovered over the course of her study was not just groundbreaking, but paradigm-shattering. She observed chimpanzees using tools, which was a first, and the relationships that they had with each other and with her forever changing our understanding of great apes and our relationships to all animals. In the decades since, her message has evolved into a personal quest to empower others to make the world a better place for all living things. It is now accepted that chimpanzees and elephants and dolphins or other animals have hierarchies, emotions, feelings, and are quite intelligent. In 1977, she established the Jane Goodall Institute, or JGI, whose aim was to continue the research at Gombe in addition to developing and implementing innovative community-centered conservation projects, as well as launching the Roots and Shoots Education and Humanitarian Program. I do want to acknowledge that Ms. Goodall brought with her some local high school ambassadors from the program who are with us here in council, and let's give them a big hand. Since the late 1980s, Dr. Goodall has spent the majority of her time, nearly 300 days a year, driven by her passion to help us all understand the difference we can make to better this fragile planet that we all share, traveling around the world on a perpetual speaking tour. She has certainly been an inspiration to me, both in my work as an animal and environmental activist, but also in my role as a father of a daughter. I don't think there's anyone else who has single-handedly inspired more girls to grow up to be scientists and environmentalists, or to work to protect and understand animals. Her work has inspired and continues to inspire the efforts we make in my office on biodiversity, wildlife corridors, animal welfare, native plants, and climate disruption. In her book, The Shadow of Man, she said, "The greatest danger to our future is apathy." Now, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our friend Bob Blumenfield and his staff. Councilmember Blumenfield's staff has been working with the Non-Human Rights Project and the Goodall Foundation for a year. And unfortunately, Bob has to be out of town, and he is heartbroken that he can't lead today's presentation. But his loss is absolutely kismet for me, because not only are we here to honor the great Jane Goodall, but today, April 3rd, is her birthday, but it also happens to be my birthday, and I could have never imagined a better birthday present than getting to meet and honor Jane Goodall. It's still hard for me to believe. Now, I'm pleased to hand over the microphone to Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, a fellow champion of environmental and animal rights, and who I know is as excited as I am to share in today's presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Coretts. Every now and again, you learn about someone, and just knowing of them and understanding a little bit of what they're about makes you a better person. And I think that is the case for tens of millions of people in the world in relation to Jane Goodall. From a very young age, she speaks in her, when she talks about growing up, she talks about her communion with animals from a very, very young age. And that's something I think that she carries with her today through her work with Roots and Shoots, because young children have a natural affinity to care deeply for animals, to care deeply for their well-being. And I think as much as anything else, her pioneering work with chimpanzees and other primates has shown people like me and people across the world the importance of communion with animals, and that they're sentient beings, that they have feelings, and that they know how to use tools. And that coexistence with the animal world simply makes our lives better and gives us a quality of life that we otherwise would not have. And in this world where we have people promoting violence and extremism, right and left, in the mainstream media on a regular basis, isn't it nice that we have someone like Jane Goodall that has always run counter to those types of teachings? Just a little tidbit, way back in the day, for three years, I volunteered at the Wildlife Way Station in Simi Valley, and I always took care of the aviaries, the birds, because everyone was afraid of the parrots. But I remember one time I was taking care of one of the aviaries, and I was kneeling on the outside of it and putting water in the container, and the chimpanzee enrichment team was walking by with what they called a miracle baby. A chimpanzee had been born there, and no one knows how it was conceived. It was a big mystery, because they do not promote that at the Wildlife Way Station. As I was kneeling, this baby chimpanzee came up to me, crawled up my legs, sat in my lap, put her arms around my neck, and kissed me on the lips. And I think, this is ironic, but not necessarily that ironic, but I always think of Jane Goodall every time I think of that baby chimp crawling up. It was one of the most special little moments I've ever had. And I learned right then and there how deeply special the connection between humans and animals are. So, Jane Goodall, on your birthday, I thank you so much for all that you've done for humankind and the animal world. It's made all of us better, it's made the world a better place in which to live, and your legacy is that you have an army of millions that you will leave behind carrying forward your work, so that the world continues being a better place for animals and people. Thank you so much, Jane Goodall, and may God bless.
Mayor Garcetti, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words. I don't know if you were planning on it, but we'd like to ask you anyway.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Councilmember Coretts. Congratulations on your birthday as well, one that we will celebrate, I'm sure, throughout the 5th District and beyond. But for all of us, to Dame Jane, I want to thank you for being here. This is a city that has been closely tied and defined by our connection to our place. Cities are usually built and nature is erased. Here in Los Angeles, it's quite the contrary. There's no great metropolis in the world of this size in which nature is so omnipresent, whether it's critters that are in our backyard, great lions that cross freeways, whether it's looking at the bighorn sheep that surround us, the incredible birds and marine life. I think Angelenos have realized that living in a city doesn't mean being disconnected from life around us. And that's something that we try to bring into our values as well. My daughter Maya is a huge fan. We read the book about you. I'm sure you've seen it, but it's in the series of famous women, kind of comic book style, but of Jane Goodall and what she did. And she has asked many years, she's at school today and unfortunately couldn't be here, but she's asked for many years whether or not she could someday go and see those animals in Africa. And I've told her, you don't have to go to Africa. Wherever we are, we can have that connection with animals where we are. We can bring that humanity and that humane-ity to what we do every single day. So, thank you for the way that you're paying that forward. Thank you for the ways that you've pointed out to us that, you know, we are just like chimpanzees, both in the good ways, when we're the best, and in the ways that we can, we fight with each other, and understanding our nature is a way to bring greater peace to us. And even though Mr. Coretts isn't, sorry, Mr. O'Farrell isn't quite sure how chimpanzees are made, and I'm going to have that talk with him later on today. It starts with a kissing, so just be careful. And then it leads one step after that to more. But your leadership, Mr. O'Farrell, has been extraordinary too. And the connections that we have, to put that forward, we are blessed to celebrate your birthday with you. And to create, there you are, you switched over, and to have this great Jane Goodall Day in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for being an angel in our city of angels.
Well, thank you, Mayor Garcetti. And now I'd like to introduce Stephen M. Weiss, the founder and president of NHRP. He's practiced animal protection law for 30 years throughout the U.S. and is the author of four books about the legal rights of animals. Mr. Weiss.
Hello, indeed, I am president of the Non-Human Rights Project, which is the only civil rights organization that is dedicated to persuading courts and others to recognize that non-human animals such as chimpanzees or elephants, cetaceans, whales and dolphins indeed have real fundamental legal rights. So, the Non-Human Rights Project's work for the last 20 years on behalf of non-human animals has been and remains firmly grounded in the work of some of the most respected scientists in the world who spend their time going to where the non-human animals themselves are and studying them as closely as they possibly can. Instead of bringing them to us, they go to them. And from the work that they've done, we've learned that elephants discuss what actions they may want to take, that chimpanzees can understand the minds of others, that whales and dolphins have names for each other, and that all these species and others are extraordinarily cognitively complex beings who can communicate both with each other and with us at remarkably sophisticated levels. The most spectacular example of this, of course, of a scientist, is standing right next to me, Jane Goodall. So, Jane, who was a founding... We are proud to say that Jane Goodall was a founding member of the Board of Directors of the Non-Human Rights Project in 1996, and she is the paradigmatic scientist who goes to where the non-human animals are and who teaches us from her findings about their emotions, about their inner lives, their capabilities, about their life stories, what they do as individuals, who they are, what they think, what they care about. In other words, who they really are, so that we can understand them, and then we also can do what we can to protect them. For that is the work of the Non-Human Rights Project, to protect the fundamental interests of such extraordinary creatures through legal rights, the way the fundamental interests of human animals are protected through legal rights. So, I'm terribly honored to consider that Jane is indeed my friend for a long time to be here to celebrate her life and work with the city council today. And I'm grateful that when we reached out to Councilmember Blumenfield and Coretts and O'Farrell, these three outstanding visionary leaders saw fit to declare this day, which is Jane, as we know now, Jane's 85th birthday, Jane Goodall Day at the city of Los Angeles. And next you'll hear then from Jane Goodall herself.
Well, what an amazing honor to begin my 85th birthday right here with all of you. And the remarks that have been made are very, you know, I mean, I'm just me, and I hear all these things said about me and what I've done, and I think, I'm hearing about somebody else. But I suppose it is me. And so, I'm going to start off. You've all, you all know that I've spent so much of my time with chimpanzees, other animals too, but let me greet you, let me bring the voice of the chimpanzee into this space, I believe, for the very first time, and greet you. Me, Jane. We've also been hearing about how like to us chimpanzees are, or how like them we are. And so, I think I'd like to do a little demonstration of how a female chimpanzee greets a very high-ranking male. And I suspect the highest-ranking male is here. So, I think there's nothing like a little demonstration. Yes, he'll remember. You'd be amazed if I gave you a list of the high-ranking people I've greeted as a chimpanzee. But anyway, I think of Los Angeles with great affection. I can't think of a better place in the U.S. than to start this 85th year of my life. Or is it the '86? I always get confused. Anyway, you know, I have many, many friends here. I've been coming back for many years. And I know that this city has a great reputation for concern for animals, for protection of wildlife. And I've met many individuals here with whom I've had meaningful discussions about the importance of protecting our environment, because as we protect the environment, the homes of the animals, we're protecting the future for our own children. So, yes, I've been learning about chimpanzees, the importance of forests which absorb carbon dioxide and give out oxygen and help us have clean air and clean water. And it's very shocking how fast the tropical rainforests of the world are disappearing, and that, of course, is chimpanzee habitat. But it's so important for people to understand that when we're protecting the environment, it is not only for the wildlife. And you know, you get accused, well, why would you care about animals when there's so much suffering among people? We care about that too. And if we destroy the environment, we have stolen the future of our own children. So, let me go back to my relationship with Los Angeles for a while. You've heard about the Roots and Shoots Program. We have four young people here. We have members from kindergarten to university in more than 50 countries, and they're all choosing projects to make the world a better place. Well, you may be interested to hear that the very first place in the United States where Roots and Shoots began was here in Los Angeles. And for a story that's too long to tell, I became, well, if I say involved, it might sound a little strange, but I was there for a truce between the Crips and the Bloods. That was a long time ago. Introduced by famous kickboxer Blinkie. I don't know if any of you know Blinkie, Blinkie and Robert. And thanks to Steve Margolis of the LAPD, and now I know it's your 150th anniversary. And you all were meant to be speaking before me, so I'm really sorry that I've kind of stepped in ahead of you. But anyhow, Steve Margolis introduced me to Mark Crocker, who was deputy chief of police back then, when the chief of police was Willie Williams. And I got to speak to all the top brass of the LAPD. And when I walked in, somebody whispered to me, "Most of them won't know who you are, and if they do, they're here to talk about promotions, so they won't be interested." And I walked in, and I looked around, and they were all just writing. One or two looked up, scratched their heads, and went on writing, but just a few sat back and looked vaguely interested in what I might have to say. So, I thought, I've got 10 minutes. So, I picked up the mic, and I said, "If I was a female chimpanzee greeting a group of very high-ranking males, I would be very stupid not to give a submissive greeting." Every head shot up. And I gave a 10-minute talk about chimpanzees, and that resulted in the LAPD introducing Roots and Shoots into its program. So, I do have these, these... So I do have these long-lasting roots, and I say -- Thank you for all you members of the LAPD. And maybe this is an occasion, we can get back together again and do something for Roots and Shoots in the city and the LAPD. I think it was your Jeopardy! program, is that right? Yes? So, you see, my relationship with Los Angeles is very deep and very real and very true. The most recent event that I celebrated here was in the Hollywood Bowl, which did the U.S. premiere of the Geographic's latest documentary, Jane. And the Geographic were very generous and brought over many of my family to share that extraordinary experience. You're so lucky here to have this beautiful Hollywood Bowl, and the stars were shining, and Philip Glass had brought a live orchestra to play for the movie. So it was a very special occasion. And then we go back a little bit further, and I was chosen for some obscure reason, because I had nothing to do with sport, but I was chosen to be the grand marshal of the Rose Parade. So, you know, the things that have happened to me here. But most of all, I remember the wonderful friends that I have, and they are many, too many to mention. And so I end by saying thank you to everybody who's enabled me to come and share these memories here in this historic place, and thank everybody for coming, being supportive. And, yes, I think we've had a bit of fun, too. That's important, so thank you.
Well, I think there's an idea that we should celebrate Jane's birthday by singing "Happy Birthday" to her.
And for Paul, so you don't have to worry.
And my sister's birthday is the same day, Judy, so can we sing for all --
Absolutely. Okay, you guys got that, Judy, Jane, and Paul? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Jane and Paul. Happy birthday to you.
Mr. President, I don't know if we have any colleagues on the queue.
Mr. Coretts, let's just give Ms. Goodall one more round of applause. We really appreciate you coming. Thank you. Thank you for all that you've done.
And now it's my honor to join Mr. O'Farrell in presenting this certificate declaring Jane Goodall Day to my personal hero since childhood, Jane Goodall.
Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonner, Buscagno, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rusev, Smith, Wesson. Thirteen members present, Anna Coram, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Price moves, Krikorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Sadio moves, Smith seconds, next.
Items one through four are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all four items.
Then let's move on to the next item.
Items five through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 18 has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 20 through 24 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Why don't we hold those items and continue?
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay. Now, I want everybody to give a round of applause to the Browerman Elementary School East, third graders are visiting us with their teachers, Megan and Polly. Give them a round of applause. They're the young people, third graders. Can we put them on television? Yeah, give them a big round of applause. They're our future leaders. Welcome, welcome to City Hall. Mr. Krikorian, would you want to move forward with the closed-session items?
Nice to see you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Items 21 through 25 are routine settlements that can be considered, budget and finances consider all those matters, and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. Those matters can be taken up in open session unless members have questions or concerns that we need to take in closed session. They are ready to be approved.
Read the items, Madam Clerk.
Item 20, in the case entitled Greg Gonzalez, Mike Belode, Jesse Soltero, and Juan Martinez versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $2.5 million in settlement. For item 21, in the case entitled Kathy Marx versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $925,000 in settlement. For item 22, in the case entitled Nancy Lopez versus Timothy Mulholland, there is a recommendation to expend up to $400,000 in settlement. For item 23, in the case entitled Hugh Beaumont versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. And finally, for item 24, in the case entitled Maria Sanchez Guzman versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $140,000 in settlement.
Thank you very much. That concludes --
Mr. President, I misspoke. They are matters 20 through 24, not 21 through 25. I was changing the agenda.
Thank you very much. Ready to vote? Would the clerk open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we can register the no vote, since it doesn't change the outcome of the items.
Okay, so I'd like to call Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Buscagno as we move into our next very important presentation.
Mr. President and members, I'd like to ask you all to please rise. We are here today to honor 150 years of service, the Los Angeles Police Department, to our great city. I'd like to begin by welcoming LAPD's Honor Guard to present the colors. And following the presentation of colors, our national anthem will be sung by LAPD Officer Rosalyn Curry. Please rise.
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Let's give our LAPD Honor Guard a round of applause. Rosalyn, incredible rendition of our national anthem again. Thank you. So colleagues, I'm joined here by the chairwoman of our Public Safety Committee, Monica Rodriguez, Councilmember Gray Smith, of course, our mayor, Chief of Police Michael Moore, as well as our police commissioners, Soboroff and Dekler, who's here as well, among others, men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department. We are here today to honor the evolution of the Los Angeles Police Department over 150 years, its storied history, its path to becoming one of the world's most exemplary policing forces, and those who have served today, served yesterday, and will serve tomorrow. Shaped by both its successes and its challenges, the department has emerged from each as a stronger, more transparent, and more community-oriented organization to the department that we know today. I want to take a brief moment to briefly highlight some of the significant events in the department's 150 history. In 1869, rather, the Los Angeles Police Department was founded at a critical moment in our city's history, a time in which crime ran rampant and frontier justice prevailed. By the turn of the century, in just 30 years, the LAPD officers were known as the pride of the state. The department hired its first detective in 1888. In 1909, trailblazer Alice Stebbins Wells was appointed as the nation's first female policewoman with arrest powers, and later went on to serve the LAPD for 30 years, urging police departments around the country to hire women. In the 1920s, Chief James Davis created the dragnet system for tracking down criminals, one of the many innovative practices the department would create over the years, including forming the first crime lab, the first SWAT team, the first DARE program, and the first cold case unit. During the Great Depression, the LAPD would help host the first L.A. Olympics and was credited with keeping crime to a minimum during the entirety of the Games. During World War II, LAPD assisted the war effort by deploying footbeats in the Harbor Division to watch for enemy submarines and signs of an invasion. After World War II, over 1,000 veterans joined the LAPD, and the Los Angeles City Council authorized a hiring of 1,175 more GIs. In August of 1965, the department was forever changed by the Watts Riots, one of the most violent social upheavals to confront LAPD. And with the help of other law enforcement agencies and the California National Guard, they were able to establish peace within a minimum loss of life and initiated a now internationally recognized model for community-based policing. In 1968, with the nation's eye in Los Angeles, the department led the critical investigation of the assassination of President Robert F. Kennedy. During the 1984 Olympic Games, rather, not president, but he was the Democratic candidate for President Robert F. Kennedy. During the 1984 Olympic Games, the LAPD affirmed its place as one of the finest police departments in the world. Working 12-hour shifts, they played a major part in the success and safety enjoyed by attendees and a worldwide audience. Let us also remember when the city was contracted in 2000, for the 2000 Democratic National Convention. The near-flawless execution gave a worldwide audience an up-close view of the new LAPD. The world was able to see that the overwhelming majority of officers are not above the law, but the embodiment of respect for the law and protectors of the public. Even the style of LAPD has changed drastically over the years. We're joined today, as you see before you, the vintage L.A. coppers, who are representing 10 different uniforms over the course of the history of the LAPD. Specifically, you see a 1920s traffic officer, a 1930s patrol officer, a 1940s motor officer, a 1940s patrol officer, a 1950s traffic sergeant, a 1950s mantle reserve, a 1970s patrol officer, and of course, what you see, the present-day uniform all around us, and it's so great to be surrounded by all of the men and women in blue today. So today, LAPD is our nation's third-largest law enforcement agency, serving over 4 million Angelenos, and they work every day to make L.A. one of our nation's safest cities. We are joined today by officers representing many different ranks, years of service, gender, and ethnicities. Some people with us today have served the city for over 40 years, while some are in their first few official weeks as an LAPD officer. This group here is a true representation of our current-day police department. These officers have continued to honor the department's legacy through exemplary service. To those who serve in the LAPD, both sworn and civilian personnel, the department is more than a career, but a lifetime of service to the city they hold dear. So each day, the men and women of the LAPD honor us with their service, and it's fitting, then, that we are gathered here today to repay that honor with our heartfelt thanks. And as you all know, every single day, officers risk their lives to protect fellow Angelenos. And although we celebrate the officers who are here with us today and those who are out in the field keeping our city safe, it's with utmost importance to honor the many officers who gave their lives in the line of duty and their families who live every day without a spouse, parent, or child. And this is why today I wear the LAPD mourning badge pin, honoring the 209 LAPD officers who've been killed in the line of duty. And I ask for a moment of silence to recognize their ultimate sacrifice to our city and Thank you. And colleagues, you've heard me say on this horseshoe how proud I am to be an LAPD officer and serving a blessed 15 years, and now as a reserve officer. And it was then, who my mentor, who's here today, Pat Gannon, then a sergeant recruited me at our local park, at Bogdanovich Park. I was officiating an adult softball league, and I had to throw a knucklehead out for cursing on the field. And apparently, he liked how I handled that situation. He said, "You ought to join the LAPD." And he took me under his wing, arranged numerous ride-alongs, and I was hooked. I was hooked because of the service I'd be able to provide for this great city, and the 15 years have been blessed. And the last eight of those 15 years was the most rewarding assignment one can hold, I believe. I'm biased. And that's the rank of a senior lead officer, who worked, I was able to work on partnerships, preventing crime, and doing all we can to reduce the incidence and fear of crime. I'll never forget those moments and the experiences. And my academy class, 1196, our motto was "First to fight, last to fall, 1196, standing tall." And that was a moment that today I reflect back on the relationships of the men and women that I sat in roll calls and police cars in pushing a way to serve the community as well as build the trust and faith and confidence between the police department and the community. And with that, I'd like to, again, recognize the men and women, the LAPD, and please join me in applauding the Los Angeles Police Department and its 150 years of incredible service to the City of Los Angeles. Yeah, I know, talk about the US, 96. So with that, before I bring up our 42nd mayor of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to turn to your attention to a video celebrating the department's 150 years. to turn your attention to a video celebrating the department's 150 years.
They were brave. They stayed brave through all the bloodshed of the coming years. Their courage created a nation built on a universal claim to human dignity, on the proposition that every man, woman, and child had a right to a future of freedom. In your careers and in the way you've lived your lives, you've all said no, a most emphatic no, to mediocrity, to averageness, to timidity. You've said no to the rules of the game, of the regulations of the day. You've said no to the conventional wisdom, no to the merely adequate, no to the limits and limitations on yourselves and others. You're all originals. You've all made America better, a better place, and you've made us seem a better place in the eyes of the people of the world.
Did you listen to me?
Yeah, let's talk about that.
So you never wanted a regular-type life, right?
Why'd you become a cop?
I don't know how to do anything else. Here we go.
Being a police officer is an endless, glamorous, thankless job that's gotta be done. And I'm damn glad to be one of them.
You feel like a hero?
What's a hero feel like?
I don't know, man.
Want to know what they're looking at?
Us.
The LAPD.
Welcome to Los Angeles, ma'am.
I got a history here.
Have it any way you want. Have an understanding?
I know this is a difficult thing to do.
I think we can handle it, though.
If you take some risks, step up when the times are the toughest, face down the bullies, lift up the downtrodden, and never, ever give up, if you do these things, the next generation and the generations that follow will live in a world far better than the one we have today, and what started here will indeed have changed the world for the better.
This is where you belong.
Again, help. Help me welcome for remarks our Mayor, Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you so much to Joe Buscagno, who, together with Greg Smith and Mitch Englander, Bernard Parks, Tom Bradley, are actually the bridge between this place and the institution that we celebrate, and so many others, who have served both as police officers and as members of this city council. So thank you, Mr. President, for this recognition, building on what is a year of celebration that we kicked off at the Police Academy just a few weeks ago. It's great to be in these chambers, celebrating a century and a half of courage, of commitment, of those who would put themselves forward to make sure that that old saying, that the city came into being to preserve life, isn't just words, but it is a reality. To my council colleagues, to Chief Moore and command staff, Chief Beck, did he come here? I got him a card. You know, he was a good guy, Chief Beck. He's on a boat someplace, probably. And members of our Police Commission, which have ensured that it is civilian oversight, that is a part of that bravery that we have connected to these men and women, who wear, of course, these uniforms. Chief Moore just told me he's authorizing all of to come back, so everybody look at this one, it's gonna be next week what we see. But this department truly is defined by excellence, not just the abstractions of what we saw in the movies, but every single day, stories that never make it on the TV or into a film, but that we know happen. We, as elected officials, have seen that countless times, with the family that's grieving, with a case like yesterday that was solved, with the peace that is kept, with the relationships at the toughest moments of tragedy, that also can lead to some of the highest moments of triumph. And the early days, when this was just a parched pueblo, a place that was willed into existence first as a Spanish town before Washington, D.C. was even our nation's capital or had been built, to 1869, where, as Joe said, when this department was first founded, up until today, when it is seen as a north star for law enforcement, a north star not only because of its excellence, but because of its openness, to always say, what can we be doing better? To take moments of mistakes and to make them lessons to be even better and to move forward. And through all of those, there's been a common denominator, a common-woven thread in this tapestry, and that is the human beings who wear these uniforms and the civilians who support them. These are all leaders who dedicate their lives literally to ours. Think about that for a second. They dedicate their lives to ours. They help us grow, they help us heal. This past week was an incredible incarnation of that, as we lost an angel in the City of Angels that Mr. Harris Dawson and Ms. Rodriguez and I mourned yesterday, somebody who was turning lives around as he turned his life around, Nipsey Hussle. But to see that uptick of crime that had visited parts of South Los Angeles, we remembered not just one fallen person, but 11. And who is it? Who are the detectives who roll out to start doing the interviews? Who are the police officers who try to build on the community relationships they've put years into? Because no police officer solves a case on her own, it is always the connections with community. That is this Los Angeles Police Department. And they've been at work calming frayed nerves, reducing the tensions, letting people mourn, and letting people know, too, that peace is the only way forward. These officers of today are worthy of the mantle to write this chapter of history for our city. 150 years is a long time, and there's no question. There have been some bright chapters and some not-so-bright chapters, ones that we would have rewrote if we could, but above all, this has been a responsive department who leads the way with its relations with immigrants, who moved from black cat to a moment now where we have liaisons with the LGBT community that are the example for this nation. Today, there's a relationship, sorry, there's an emphasis on building relationships of trust, getting to know the names of the people that we serve, and vice versa, letting them know as well. And while crime statistics are down, while we see one of the safest cities we've ever had, we know that these men and women will never rest until we have no murders, until we try to seek no crime in this city. And make no mistake, where there is one, we will be there to answer the call. And so I thank you for that courage, I thank you for that history, and we celebrate the next 150 years of keeping peace and building a good life for all of us, which we do because of the men and women of this great department. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Help me next welcome the Chairwomen of our Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Monica Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno, and colleagues. You know, this is a very special day, and I think about my first encounter with LAPD that happened more than 40 years ago. And that was as a kid, growing up in Arlita, when my mom and dad, my dad was on deployment as an L.A. City firefighter, so he was not home, but returning home from a visit to my grandparents' house, we came home and walked in on what was a robbery in our home. And it was the response of that LAPD, that LAPD officer from Foothill that came to our home. I was about five years old, walking into my broken piggy bank, my mom's jewelry stolen. But it was the aftermath that helped to form a very important relationship that I would continue on in my life with LAPD. And it was through the development of a neighborhood watch program, and it was through the collective efforts of working with LAPD and my neighbors and my mom and dad hosting these important meetings that really transformed our neighborhood, helping us to feel more comfortable to take those bars off the windows. And so I want to say my deepest, sincerest gratitude to the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department for helping to restore the faith, the safety, and the sense of community in so many neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles, and I thank you so very much for your continued service in our community. I'm proud to join all of you here today, and Chief Moore, thank you so much for your incredible leadership. We are going to be reflecting on the contributions of the women officers of the Los Angeles City Police Department. And nearly a full decade before women gained the right to vote in this nation, there was a woman by the name of Ms. Alice Stebbins Wells who broke into police work, and it wasn't easy. Alice, who was serving as the city matron, was initially denied her request to become a policewoman. She rallied her community and ultimately this Los Angeles City Council, and on September 12, 1910, was the nation's first policewoman, beginning her service in the city of Los Angeles, and we have her image here. Today, we have over 1,800 sworn female officers in the department, making up nearly 20% of our force. And what I'm grateful for is the commitment of this department to assure that we are going to continue to hire with making, with the commitment of having the diversity that is reflective of this city of Los Angeles. The second photo that we have to share is one of my favorites. Let me pull that up. This is an image of, you know, folks, women do, women can do the same thing men can do, but we can do it in heels. We have, we have another photo. The third photo is the photo of the first female unisex class that took place in 1973. The next photo is another great class picture reflecting the diversity of the department. You gotta love how those uniforms have evolved. There we go. And, and photo, this final photo here, we have of Jennifer Grasso, the first female SWAT officer for our Los Angeles Police Department. We are grateful for these trailblazing women in the Los Angeles Police Department, from Alice Stebbins Wells, for paving the way for more women to serve. And today, we are honored to be joined by one of our newest recruits, who grew up in the 77th Division. And we are joined today by Tyler Quinn, who just graduated from our Police Academy on March 15, 2019. Thank you so much for joining us today. Tyler represents a new generation of leaders and problem solvers, ready to serve and protect our communities, and I'm proud to support your journey as a, as you have come onto this department and how you will continue to help expose other youth from our community as the opportunity to protect and serve their neighborhoods. And thank you so much for joining us. I want to thank our YSOs. I know we had some of our YSOs that are part of the Honor Guard that were here today. You know, it's an incredible line of work that so many men and women of this department have chosen to take and, take on, that extend beyond the day-to-day service of the police force, and they are the mentors that are helping to give our kids a new direction and a new opportunity. And we thank you all for your incredible and dedicated service to our Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd like to now acknowledge and bring up the President of the Los Angeles Police Commission, Commissioner Soboroff. Steve?
Thank you. On behalf of the Commissioner, Commissioner Dekker, and Mr. Tifank, and our Inspector General, we want to say thank you.
Let's keep it down.
We want to say thank you to the council members, to the mayor, to the public safety group, because after 150 years, we have the right chief, we have the right council, we have, for the future. And our future, young lady.
Yeah.
Is with you. And it ain't the next 150 years, it's the next 150 hours, and the next 150 days, and the next 150 weeks and months, and we're gonna all do that together. And we're just delighted, council member by council member, for your support and for your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So as we all know, the department is overseen by the 57th Chief of Police, Michael Moore, and under his leadership, the department continues to grow and improve and forwarding, moving forward toward, moving toward, rather, a relationship-based policing model that has been embraced by this department and other law enforcement agencies that follow around the country. I've been associated with the National League of Cities as a vice president, and it gives me great pride when other municipal leaders come to me and say, "We'd like to do what LAPD is doing in our city," and that is embracing community-based policing. And I know this Chief of Police that's about to speak, it's in his DNA. Help me welcome Chief Michael Moore.
Councilman, thank you. Council President, members of the council, I am the luckiest man alive, for a couple reasons. First of all, foremost, my wife, Cindy, and my daughter, Haley. But right behind that is the privilege to be the 57th Chief of Police, and my 38th year with what I believe is the greatest department, the greatest police department, not just in America, but across the world. You saw a short, vintage series of shots of our history, our 150-year history. Little did William Warren ever imagine, in 1869, with six other officers, where we would be today, I am sure. As we look across these last 150 years, these video vignettes give us a moment to look back and remember our history. It's both its bright days and its darkest moments. This is a department to protect and to serve, that as the leader, as the chief, I get to tell the stories of the men and women, of their efforts, of their valentry, of their courage, of their humility, of their efforts each day to make a difference in the lives of Angelinos. And we get to see those, that difference each day. I want to talk briefly, as we recognize those ups and downs, that we've led in the diversity, we've led in the sophistication, we've led in what it means to be an American cop across this country, whether it be the first woman to come on this job, or it be the first African-American man to come on this job. When Robert Stewart was appointed in 1889 as the first African-American police officer, this department, he fought and struggled within. It was an apartment that later fired him, under accusations that were later proven untrue, yet it would not hire him back. And it is an apartment today that, as I reflect as its chief, and as our men and women who represent so many generations in uniform, but so many generations active, we do not forget our history for those dark moments. Our commitment is to remember that history and to also champion for the future. And as I stand here today before a council made up both of members of this organization as well as leaders throughout this city, I appreciate, as chief, your support of how important public safety is in this city, for the good of this city, and your support of these men and women in doing a very tough job, in providing them the resources, in listening, and providing both legislative, but also suggestions of how we connect best with our community. So as I bring to a close here, I want to comment about a couple opportunities that all of Los Angeles has to celebrate with us. This is a year of celebration with 150 years of service to this city. Each of our stations across Los Angeles, all 21 of them, are holding open house events. There's a calendar of events here and also available online, and I encourage Angelinos to come, and if they've not been inside of a police station, they've not visited a station for busy lives that they lead, that they take a moment and pause and see their men and women, meet them. Our officers are there and looking to form relationships and renew old ones. On November 7, the city will celebrate at the Police Museum. Our 150th anniversary is kind of a, that'll be the culmination event. Again, at one of the few museums in America that celebrate the history, that points out both our triumphs as well as our challenges. And it's a great opportunity, it forms a great backdrop, I believe, to celebrate this year and as we move forward. Let me close by a commitment of, we live in challenging times. We always will. But there is no greater department made up of no better DNA than to be a Los Angeles Police Cop, whether that's airport police, port police, or LAPD. These are men and women that move to change and make circumstances as best possible to protect and to serve. Proud to be their chief, proud of the work they do each day, and we're committed- Proud to be their chief, proud of the work they do each day, and we're committed to the safety of Los Angeles. God bless you all, and thank you for this wonderful afternoon.
Thank you, Chiefs, for those remarks. Help me welcome our colleague, Council Member Greg Smith, who is also a proud Los Angeles Police Department Reserve Officer. Greg, you're up.
Thank you very much. The good news, Counsel, is I'm clean up, so. I feel like after watching Jane Goodall, I should hug the chief or something, but that would be very awkward, so we won't do that. I'm delighted to be here to celebrate a hundred-and-fifty years of a great department. I think of the department, of all those vignettes we saw about those great moments in our history, but I also think about the people that wear that badge. Having been in reserve for twenty-seven years, I've worked with some incredible people. I remember particularly an officer named Henry Izzo, who was a Senior Lead Officer in Devinger Division, working with a brand-new recruit, right out of the academy, named Angelo Angelitis, who were working on Reseda Boulevard at four-thirty in the morning on January seventeenth. That moment was the striking of the Northridge earthquake. Their car began to vibrate violently, back and forth, and bounce up and down. They didn't know what was going on, but they figured out it was probably an earthquake, because immediately, the entire San Fernando Valley went dark. Every single light in the valley went off. Immediately, Izzo, being an experienced officer, grabbed the mic and began to broadcast, but nobody was listening. The Communications Division was down. They were on their own, by themselves, in what came to be the worst national disaster in American history at that point. He went to work. He drove down the street. To the right was Fire Station Seventy. The door was closed. He figured, well, maybe it's not that bad of an earthquake after all. What he didn't know is the twenty officers inside that fire station had their axes out trying to break the door down, because they were stuck in the fire station. They couldn't get out. Drove another block, saw a number of people walking out of a two-story apartment building, waving him down. He pulled over. He found out that there were people trapped in the building, so he looked for the entrance. There was no entrance. This two-story apartment building was really a three-story apartment building that had collapsed. And underneath that building were fifty-two dead people. But inside that building were a hundred people trying to get out that were trapped. And he and Angelitis went with their flashlights and led them out, took thirty of them out, until the fire department could finally get there and assist them. They did their job they were trained to do, because that is what they do. A few miles up the road, in Santa Clarita, Clarence Wayne Dean, a traffic officer for twenty-six years with LAPD Valley Division, knew that it had an earthquake. Lights went out in Santa Clarita also. He grabbed his microphone, his radio, broadcast, nobody was listening. He knew he had to go to work. And he did what thousands of cops in this city did, all over the city. They knew there was a problem, they got in their uniforms, they came to work without being called, without being asked, because they knew what their job was, and that is to protect and serve. Clarence Wayne Dean got on his motorcycle, went down the Fourteenth Freeway. What he did not know is the Fourteenth Freeway had collapsed, and he drove off it into his death. I remember those kind of people, because they're extraordinary people, extraordinary moments. And those are the kind of people we should never forget, that when danger strikes, when danger is in front of them, they do their job that they were trained to do, and they do it with pride and dignity, because on their police card says they're there to protect and serve. A few years later, working as a Reserve Officer in the robbery homicide division, LAPD was the host agency for what we call the California Homicide Investigators Association. It's about six hundred detectives around the state that get together once a year and trade information on how to deal with crime. This particular LAPD was the host, and it was in Nevada, at Las Vegas. So we decided to bring out the history of LAPD, which is in our museum. And if you've never been to our museum, you must go see it. It's a beautiful museum in Highland Park. Please go. We brought out some records of LAPD that were well-known, the Black Dahlia case, the SLA shooting, which was the birth of the SWAT program. We brought out the records of the Robert Kennedy assassination, the North Hollywood shootout, and all those famous cases, Charlie Manson. We opened it up to the delegates to the convention on the night before, and the next morning, we opened it to the public. That morning, there were four thousand people in line, standing in the casino, going down out to the parking lot and down the Boulevard, who came to see that exhibit. Over the next three days, twenty-five thousand people came to see LAPD's history. And we went out and talked to them and asked, "Were you just here on the convention, you stopped by?" And most of them said, "No, we saw it on CBS News, Morning News." And we decided to drive here, from Texas, from Wisconsin, from Nebraska. They came from all over the country. Because if you ask people anywhere in this world, one of the most famous police departments in the world, they'll tell you Scotland Yard and LAPD. And people wanted to see what LAPD was all about. And so today, we celebrate a hundred years of incredible, a hundred-and-fifty years of incredible history, incredible stories, incredible people. These people that put on the uniform every day and go out there, never know if they're going to come back at night or not. That's an extraordinary type of people, and that's what we're celebrating today. I'm honored to be here to do that. And Chief, to the men and women of this department, God bless all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Bustaino, I'd like to recognize Mr. Price.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank, thank my colleagues, Joe and Ms. Rodriguez, and, and Mr. Smith, for bringing the mayor, joining the mayor and, and the chief, our commissioners, and men and women in blue, as we celebrate an exciting, an exciting milestone. A hundred-and-fifty years. You know, we certainly have come a long way. And really, I think for the better. And I think it's exemplified by comments made by the mayor referencing the spate of violence that we've had in South LA, gun violence, over the past two weeks or so, twelve shootings, just, and of course, a lot of publicity about the Nipsey Hussle shooting, but the response, I think, very sensitively by the department, has been certainly to increase patrolling, but also to increase community intervention activities. And I think that's, that really is the new LAPD. You know, we don't want to relive the past, but, but we shouldn't forget it as we move forward, as we're making the kinds of improvements and the kind of commitments that really make, makes sense in our community. So while we, we certainly honor the legacy of your service, the legacy of your commitment, we just want to make sure that the entire community is benefiting from your efforts to protect and serve. And I know that we want to support you, the community wants to support you, be your partner, making that possible as we celebrate another hundred-and-fifty years. Congratulations.
Mr. Coretts, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank my colleagues, Mr. Bustaino, and Mr. Smith, although I don't see him. There, there he is. And Ms. Rodriguez, for putting this together and celebrating a hundred-and-fifty years of protecting and serving. I think this department gets better and better. Your Senior Lead Officer Program is incredible, and I think every neighborhood activist, certainly in my district, knows their slow and works with them well. We've done great things in terms of improving diversity, especially in working with LGBTQ community and others. I think we've taken some great steps in dealing with other things like antisemitism, although unfortunately, that and antisemitism and hate crimes are sort of rearing their ugly heads more. But the LAPD's been incredibly responsive, met with staff, met with community, and is doing an amazing job of, of responding to that. We've gone through some difficult eras, and I think we've come through well. We've certainly had a lot of visibility with hit TV shows based on the LAPD and its success. And I think we are known the world over as having the best police department in the world. So I thank you all for risking your lives and giving us that, and look forward to continuing to work with all of you in the future.
I just want to thank you all for your service and say happy one-hundred-and-fiftieth. Mr. Bustaino, back to you.
Thank you. Before I turn it back to our Chairwoman, I want to, to recognize, there were so many moving parts here in preparation for today's festivities and presentation. In my office, Laura, Laura Hill, and Sarah Faden, my partner of four years. Sarah, love you, miss you. And our council members, Greg Smith and Monica Rodriguez's respective staffs as well for putting this on. So without, I'll turn it over for the, the final presentation to the Public Safety Chairwoman, Monica Rodriguez. Thank you.
Final, final. Go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Final, final. Thank you, colleagues. And again, LAPD, congratulations on a beautiful hundred-and-fifty-year history. We look forward to the continued success, the continued diversity, and the commitment to protect and serve in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you all very much for your service. Happy one-hundred-and-fifty years.
Thank you.
So your wife and kids there, I see.
Well, I didn't let someone go home. The kids were at school, so.
Where is she?
Now, she just went back home, because they just finished the operation.
You don't even question it. You're the council member.
All right, let's, we're going to move into, we're going to move into general public comment. Adam, Adam Smith and Rob, if you'd follow Adam. Adam, are you here? Rob, you're after, Rob Quine, you're after Adam. Then, I think it's Kiana would be next.
Not going to leave you two. It's your birthday.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
Last week, at the Ad-Hoc Committee meeting about the Olympics, there was a lot of talk about the play equity gap. This idea that investing money into swimming lessons in youth sports is going to have a lasting impact on the health of Los Angeles. But my question is, how is closing the play equity gap going to truly help poor communities, black communities, and brown communities, desperately impacted by gentrification in their neighborhoods, desperately impacted by policing? With groups like the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition and Million Dollar Hoods poring over LAPD arrest data, we see how racial profiling is not just a consequence of policing in this city, but is actually a strategy, specifically with the Metro Division in South LA. What is closing the play equity gap going to accomplish while the LAPD, who want to grow their force by twenty-five hundred officers in the next ten years, are stopping black folks at five times their population share and criminalizing them for being poor? Separating families, separating parents from children?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Rob, did I say Kiana, Serianne, and Mr. Soto? Yes, Mr. Quine?
I'd like to start by thanking the Rules Committee for reading itself to take up the Ethics Commission's recent recommendations on campaign finance reforms. In particular, I'd like to highlight a few findings from their report. Over the last five years, fifty-two percent of behested payments were donated by those having recent business with the city. This is a giant twenty-six million dollar conflict of interest. The Commission found eight of the top ten payers of behested payments had recent business with the city. The Ethics Commission recommends banning behested payments from developers, contractors, and lobbyists. I'd remind you that nothing stops these individuals from donating in individual capacity. And the Ethics Commission made a conscientious effort to carve out a number of exceptions, including a state of emergency, a fire. We have a state of emergency for homelessness, so this wouldn't affect bridge housing, a general call that the public would be exempt, donation drives at City Hall, grant applications, pro bono services. The LA County Democratic Party is taking up an item in support of this next week, and I'd just ask you to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and then I'll look for Hugh Soto, Chris Roth. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Kiana Alsumonfire. I'm the Policy Outreach Coordinator with California Common Cause. We are a nationwide, nationwide network focused on strengthening our democracy with over ten thousand members based here in Los Angeles. We'd like to express our support for the campaign finance proposals that our Ethics Commission has unanimously recommended to council. The proposals restrict contributions from non-individuals and real estate developers, limiting both the perceived and real influence that these entities have on our local government. Over the past decade, thirty-three Ethics Commission enforcement orders have involved developers or development projects and resulted in more than one million dollars in administrative penalties. These numbers represent approximately a third of all respondents and just over half of all penalties during that time period. The proposed restrictions on contributions and fundraising from non-individuals and developers would be a huge step in dismantling the public perception of pay-to-play politics in City Hall. They would also make Los Angeles a leader and role model, role model in ethics reform, and for that reason, we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Identify yourself, please, and welcome.
Carrie Anne Robertson. I'd also like to talk about the issues discussed last week regarding the Olympic legacy and the focus on closing the play equity gap. It's not clear why this needs to be the priority over other urgent issues facing the city, specifically housing and homelessness, policing, immigration. It's not clear how spending money on tennis courts and swimming pools actually supports the long-term future of low-income communities and families who may be displaced within the next decade and not able to use these resources. I'd like to read a quick James Baldwin quote from nineteen sixty-eight. "You're talking about the people who have the power, who intend to keep the power, and all they can think about are things like swimming pools in the summertime, and made-up jobs to protect peace in the public property. But they show no sign whatsoever of understanding what the root of the problem is, what the dangers really are."
Thank you. Next, identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Hugo Soto. I'm a resident of District Four, but previously, I grew up a large part in District Nine. So I also want to talk about the things that were discussed here last week regarding the play equity gap. It seems like a lot of money is being, trying, trying to find a lot of money for, you know, an event that'll be here in nine years, whereas the issue of homelessness is, continues to be an urgent matter in the city. I see homeless people who are unhoused, living across the, right on the riverbanks. And when we brought this to the attention of some of our state legislators, there was a lot of debate whether, you know, was it this federal responsibility, was it the state? And nobody could really come up with an answer. So I have a very simple solution. There is a lot of hotels rooms that are vacant every single night. I would suggest the city create emergency vouchers for people to live in those overnight. This is something that Santa Monica did many years ago, and I think would be a nice way to, to fix the problem. Thank you for your time.
Chris?
Good morning, Council. Chris Roth. I just wanted to make a quick point about the Olympics regarding the costs associated with the game. We were promised that the bid that was made for the LA hosting these twenty-twenty-four Games, which got pushed back to twenty-twenty-eight, was not going to cost taxpayers any money. There is some conversation going on around about this one-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar advance from the IOC. That money is not a gift, it's not free, they are going to want it paid back. They get to make determinations on what the loan can and cannot be spent on. It's not a good deal for LA. Similarly, in the unlikely event that the twenty-twenty-eight Games actually do make a profit, the IOC has already placed conditions on how that money can be spent, and none of that money is going to get to go back into the city. And the fact that is just being flat-out ignored by everyone who's involved in this process. There's a reason why all of these other cities have been dropping out of their Olympic bids. It is not a good deal for the city. In fact, two of the candidates for the Mayor of Paris are pointing on a platform against the twenty-twenty-four bid there. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, let's move into multi. So if I could get Mr. Previn, Ms. Ramirez.
Sir, when you say multi, you mean my multi items and then my general public comment? Because you just called up those people in general public comment. Multi and then general. Okay. Okay, well, thank you. We have a light, light multi section tonight, but appreciate that. On May first, we'll be having the hearings on the various protests. We have one in CD Two out on, I believe it's Elmer and Victory Boulevard. This is where the residents come together and vote. And if they want to accept the lighting ordinance, they don't protest. If they do, they issue the number of votes. Now, the problem is, is that the council members do not do a very good job at all of notifying people. At least, we've never seen anything. And I do serve among the neighborhood councils. Now, CD One, Item Four, it's College Street. Now, when people hear college, they think College Station, which is the giant development for which Marquise Harris Dawson took enormous contributions from Mr. Goldberg, the developer, just weeks after Weezer was defenestrated. Again, he voted for the project. So, you know, we have concerns. And I know RUE, this group who talked about ethics, is working hard on making sure that people do not have a chance to donate to developers, but that has to come from you all, not from a rule, because that's a First Amendment violation. So you have to pull together and say, "We won't take, you know, donations from developers." Or, Mr. Smith, sitting down. Or, Mr. Smith, sitting down, good timing, we won't take them from lawyers either. Now, as you know, Tom Peters had a very tough time because he was referring people to his own cases.
Could we get back on the items that you were trying to...
Sure, sure, sure. The items, first of all, I want to celebrate the closed session. The timing was unbelievable.
Right, no, no, no. Those are not the closed sessions.
They're done, right. We're moving past them.
The only items subject to public comment, Mr. Previn, are 1 to 4. It's street lighting items.
Mr. Previn, you understand the rules, sir. Come on, let's get with...
Number 4, CD1, College...
You know which items you signed off on? I need you to get back on the items.
Appropriate to interrupt. As I said, college, I'll read it, I'll read it.
It's inappropriate for you not to follow the rules, sir.
You have to stop talking during my time. It's totally inappropriate. Here it is. College Street Lighting District, CD1. That's Gil Cedillo. If you want to find out the big guy with the cane who is working with him and talking to Mr. Smith, he's over there. But that's what we're doing, okay? And today, it's just a lighting district. Nobody's upset about that. We just want to draw attention to the fact that there was an awful lot of, frankly, you know, retaliation on an agenda which we were celebrating, the LAPD. Okay? So there you go. I've said it. Almost $3 million settled just seconds before our great Chief of Police had to...
So, Mr. Previn, again, you're not on the items. Maybe we should just send you to general public comment then, since you don't really want to talk.
Go ahead and give him his one minute of a general public comment.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it because I don't want to quibble with a quibbler. But I will tell you that I'm extremely upset about that, because I was trying to raise some awareness about it, and yet you did not provide an actual opportunity to comment on those items. That would be, I think, on today's agenda, 21, 22, and 23, whatever they are that were settled. One was for 2.5 million by Matt McNicholas brought a case. He just wanted 25,000 in the beginning. But LAPD, you know, couldn't face the fact that they were retaliating against good LAPD officers who spoke out. And then Kathy Marks, God, what a horrible story, Weezer. Here's a woman who is working in the Internal Bureau, and they're saying, let's change the record and lie, and she's, we can't do that. And then Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Kocorian take a closed meeting over here, trying to ignore what is actually true. $925,000 to... So it is shameful, and we do respect our LAPD. And we do not rule, we do not buy the idea that by bringing down these two things at the exact same moment and sticking our charming mayor in there with Jane Goodall, it mitigates what you're not doing well, which is handling our matters. And the LAPD knows that they have a problem, but they keep rolling it over and rolling it over.
Next speaker, Ms. Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, you filled out cards for Items 2 and 3 in general public comment. You want to just do general public comment? You're now gonna do Items 2 and 3, okay? Give her her one minute. Go ahead, Ms. Ramirez.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm asking you all to stop all donations to all black groups because they are sponsoring domestic terrorism. They fund your violent Skid Row niggers and other militant niggers, i.e. Antifa, NAACP, Black Panthers, Black Lives Matter, Aunt Jemima's nigger racist hate mongers, and Al Sharpton and Jesse Jackson American company extortionists, et al. And what they do is allow these violent Skid Row niggers and all criminal niggers to orchestrate and commit a litany of crimes against legal law-abiding homeless women. The Skid Row niggers join forces with the Chango Latino gang bangers and wetbacks and Asian gangs. They urinate on homeless women's tents while they're sleeping. They rob and beat homeless women. Theft, theft, theft is a daily occurrence. Bullying and threatening homeless women, gang-stocking and harassing homeless women every day, everywhere, all night and all day, especially at the Music Center, Grand Park, male and female bathrooms, block 1 through 4. LAPD Chief Michael Moore and Steve Soboroff, Eric Garcetti, and City Attorney Michael Fuhr, your political pandering pussies. Lick those asses, boy, and lick 'em good. No nigger is above the law.
Your time is up, Ms. Ramirez. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler. Wayne, you're speaking on Items 1 through 4 in general public comment.
You see that? Yeah. Let's see here. We got a note here. Well, thank you. I got an invitation here from Greg Smith. Oh, you're such a nice guy. I appreciate that shit.
You check on the items you signed off on, Mr. Spindler.
What? Nah, nah. Okay, number 1, this is what I hate. Let me just preface my remarks. I hate all you white motherfuckers are number 1, because that shit in CD2, the lighting district, that is the only thing we don't need. Now, they ain't selling too much dope in the 2nd district, known as Item 1. So if you ain't selling dope, you ain't selling stolen cars. Why do you have to charge homeowners on Victory Boulevard for fucking lighting? Get that motherfucking Armenian in jail. Now, you get to number 2, and you get the Jew, Jew. That's right, the Jews are attacking their own homeowners on Haskell Avenue and at Seagull Street, boo. And this is the problem, is that Paul Coretts treats Encino like his personal doghouse. That's right. He treating them Jews up there like bitches, and I understand why. I understand why. Now, you see in the CD5, it bought a CD6, and Nury Martinez has been hopelessly trying to stop the theft. But that Jew motherfucker, Paul Coretts, continues to steal from homeowners on unnecessary duplicaté of lighting districts. And we got number 3, 4, Mall 1, 9, and 14. Now, in the 1st district, we got Gilbert Cedilio, also known as Gilbert Cedillo. Now, the problem is, is that Gil wanted to waive all of the fees on his district, but Eduardo wouldn't allow it. No. She said, no, they gotta pay too. It's all Eduardo's fault. And then we get to 9, we get to Current Price, and Current Price's legal advisor is here, former indicted council member Mike Hernandez, supporting the ship. And then, of course, we get to Jose Huza, aka Jose Weezer. On the 14th district side, he too wants the liens to be waived and the fees to be waived under the Prop 218. But the problem is, is that his new staff member, Eduardo, will not allow it. So when you get a bill in the mail, ladies and gentlemen, and they raise your taxes for unnecessary, call 473-70014 and ask for Eduardo, because Eduardo's stealing your money. Eduardo is the racist fool doing the whole thing. That's well done. Thank you, sir.
You have one minute of general public comment?
So as we see today, what a great graphic we've got here. We've got an FBI target talking to a felonious former council member. How smart your legal advisors are to be in the middle of the council chambers cavorting with convicted felons. Now, I say this, how many months have been now? Five months since the raid? Mr. Weezer has been convicted of no crime, not even charged with a single goddamn fucking thing. So I want Mr. Weezer restored to all of his committee assignments, all of his committee assignments now. And Mr. Mark Quizy Harris-Dawson seconds that. In fact, Mark Quizy is saying that he's gonna go and start wearing a goddamn KKK outfit if this is not addressed. So please, get Mr. Weezer back on committees. He has not been charged. The FBI is a bunch of motherfuckers full of shit. Thank you.
All right, you're done. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Herman, you're next. Herman, you're speaking on Items 1 through 4 in general public comment.
That's right. Just walked in here just to assess the assessments for the first street lightings, which already have taken the taxpayers' pay taxes away. You will never, ever notify those of us to the election results. So I say, will I or you guess set a bill for street lighting? Motherfucker put the property tax by those motherfucking county people called the assessor's office. So you know where I stand, motherfuckers. I'm talking about CD2. White nigger Parker Corian, eh 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 eh. And what does he say about the Los Angeles administrative cost towards street lighting? That fucking Armenian say nothing right about our street lights, because I do the Jew, 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 motherfuckers. And then you talk about CD5, the fat motherfucker there with the oh, 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 oh. Yeah, you know Jane was right. Motherfucker wants to put lights where the fucking Jews don't need them. I need the lights in CD14. I need the lights in CD9, Current Price, and I need the lights in the honorable Mr. Cedillo. You know why? Because I want to notify the public that you're gonna have a result of paying taxes for the new motherfucking lights. And who gets fucked in the ass by this? Who gets stroked like this? It look like I'm dancing now? No, I got the motherfucking light success which motherfuckers like me don't want in my community. You know better than that. Come on, Mr. City Attorney. Why fuck the county assessor to fuck with white nigger me too? The C of my diplomacy means KKK, and I'm not a cunt, bitch.
So, Mr. Herman, will you get back on the items, please?
So you see, y'all, I'm talking about the hearing protests against proposed improvements in maintenance. We ain't gonna fix shit. We ain't got no motherfucking money. That's what you got with motherfucking potholes. You don't even put the motherfucking light on the goddamn street. How can I see a motherfucking pothole when you don't assess the maintenance of motherfucking lights, you stupid dumb motherfucking attorney? I'm talking to you, white nigger. Turn around and look at me and correct me if I'm wrong. Who fix the motherfucking potholes? You dumb motherfucker. You know I'm right. 42 U.S.C., 1983. Fuck the police. So otra vez el sordo pendejo Jose Weezer. El mendigo de CD Cartose que mete el verga en contólicos porque el güey siente allí no dice nada. You have anything to say about it, Mr. Weezer? Oh, fuck you. I got nothing to say. FBI hasn't indicted me yet. Well, you know what, motherfucking wetback, like that bitch wetback up there and that other cunt wetback there? All you bitches are gonna get laid. And I hope it's what my little millimeter dick, dickhead, you salishian motherfucker. I'm talking about you. I'm talking about 42 U.S.C., 1983, because I got a...
Herman, Mr. Herman, direct your comments to this body, Mr. Herman. You're done. You're disrupting this meeting. Sergeants, can you please have him removed from our meeting? Mr. City Attorney, let the record reflect, Mr. Herman is not speaking to the general body of this council. He continues to disrupt this council meeting.
Madam President, I don't think our new rules allow any public speaker to directly attack someone for the majority of their comment period. And it's supposed to be directed at the full body and the public. So I would ask that, whether it's me or anybody else on this council, that any individual coming up and doing such direct attacks and not addressing the full body be asked to stop. If not, that is a warning, and they would be asked to leave. Thank you.
You're correct, Mr. Weezer. He should be directing his comments either to the presiding officer or the council as a whole. And when the presiding officer was trying to correct him on that, he refused to be quiet and started shouting. And he's continuing to disrupt the meeting, even though he's been ordered, removed, and should be leaving quietly. He's not.
Mr. Kocorian?
The city attorney was explaining what was happening and attempting to make the record. Mr. Spindler is shouting out from the audience and disrupting the course of the meeting as well. And to Mr. Weezer's point, general public comment does not mean comment on any foolish concept that might pop into someone's head. It's supposed to be at least tangentially related to the conduct of the business of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles. And pornographic remarks about members of this council or anyone else are clearly outside of the scope of business of the City of Los Angeles and the City Council. So I would ask Mr. City Attorney and to our leaders on the podium, that when pornographic comments are being made by members of the public that have nothing to do with the work of this council, that that be found to be inherently disruptive and of the course of the business of this council, and that it's delaying the appropriate business of this city council. So I think we need to kind of start drawing some distinctions between criticism of this council and just the sort of, it's nothing short of pornographic, really, and that has nothing to do with the business of this council. So if we could, please, identify those comments as being disruptive at this meeting as well. Mr. Spindler is continuing to talk as I'm speaking, again. So he's interrupted Mr. Weezer, Mr. City Attorney, and myself within a span of 10 minutes.
Sergeants, please escort Mr. Spindler out of our council meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Spindler, you were indeed warned when Mr. Kocorian was talking, and now you're disrupting the meeting again.
And there is no warning necessary when someone is disrupting a meeting and disregarding the lawful orders of the Chair of this council. Whoever is president of the council and makes a lawful order needs to be respected and obeyed by members of the public. Mr. Spindler has continued to violate lawful instructions from the Chair routinely. No warning is necessary. He should be excluded.
And which he's doing now, because he was ordered to leave quietly, and of course, he's shouting all the way out.
All right, thank you very much. There are no more speakers on these items. Just go ahead and vote on Items 1 through 4. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Can we all rise for adjourned motions, please? Any adjourned motions to my left? Seeing none, are there any adjourned motions to my right? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a great afternoon, everyone.